Evening, everyone. Madam City Clerk, I'm just waiting for you to let us know about the chambers or sound or everything's prepared to move forward.
Oh, we're good. If you can hear me, we're good. We're waiting on you.
Okay, the, could you do a sound check once more?
Testing, testing. Can you hear me?
Thank you. I had to just on my end. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And we are ready to begin. Today is Tuesday, October thirteenth, twenty twenty five forty eight P. M. And we will now begin the Compton City Council meeting, roll call.
Counselperson Chambers.
Listen.
Galvane. McCoy.
Here.
Sharif.
Yeah.
Mayor Brown.
Here. Thank you. Proceeding forward on tonight's agenda for our special guests, we have Senator Steve Bradford with us here on tonight to share a legislative update. Senator Bradford, welcome and thank you for taking the time to provide the community and council looking at the legislature.
Thank you, Mayor Brown and council members, and it's truly an honor to be before you this evening and provide a brief legislative update, a tradition that I've started over the last ten years since I've been in a legislature, and this will be my fourth time coming before the Compton City Council as your senator to provide update of not only my legislative accomplishment, but what we've done as a state as well, and as I think we'll all agree that this has been one of the most challenging, challenging times, not only in our state's history, but our nation's history, experience, probably the world. It's required us to take different approaches, but I'm happy to report that despite all the challenges, we pass on time budget this year in California with no cuts, no tax increases. It required us to deep dig deep into our rainy day funds. We had fifty four billion in reserves due to the rainy day fund that we started under Governor Brown and continued under current Governor Newsom, but it required us to impact that savings quite considerably. Almost half of that has been depleted, but I give a lot of that credit to working this budget out to our two amazing budget chairs, Phil Ting in the Assembly and Holly Mitchell in the Senate, who did the lion's share of the work to provide the legislative with a budget that was agreeable upon not only with members, but with the governor as well. As stated, COVID nineteen impacted how we did work in the California legislature this year. We had a truncated legislative year. Our typical years from January to September. We did end the year on August thirty first, a little bit after midnight technically, September the first. But at the beginning of the year, I introduced twenty pieces of legislation, and when we returned in May, we were asked to try and take that legislation and have it primarily focus on COVID-related economic recovery and health-related issues. During that period of time, I was also appointed the co-chair of the Senate Economic Recovery Task Force, serving jointly with Senator Bob Hertzberg from San Fernando Valley, and through that task force of eight other senators, we came up with a lot of legislation that has found its way, that found its way, I should say, to the governor's desk in a variety of COVID-related legislation from small business protection to landlord and tenant protection, to healthcare, to critical workers' needs, to even small business loans. So that's where we get to today, and of those twenty pieces of legislation that I introduced, I reduced my bill package down to seven, and I'm happy to report of those seven pieces of legislation, six of them made its way to the governor's desk, all of which earned his signature. So I bet at a thousand percent this year despite many of the challenges. And I'll just quickly go over some of those pieces of legislation that I was able to introduce. First was landlord and renter protection. As we've all heard in all of our communities, the fear of tenants not being able to pay their rent, but more importantly landlords not being able to make their mortgage to protect their properties, and many times a lot of folks thought the focus was primarily on the tenant, but we want to make sure that the landlord, many of whom are our frontline essential workers, mom and pop, apartment owners, not these mega corporations that have thousands of units, as we all know, as you probably know plenty of your constituents in Compton who go to work every day, but were fortunate enough to buy an apartment building or duplex or triplex, and many times that's their retirement or their kids' college fund or just how they supplement their income. So we were able to get that passed. It was, it started out as my Senate bill, but we morphed it into an assembly bill, and it was A B thirty eighty-eight, and again, it provides renters with protection up until the first of the year. They're asked to pay twenty-five percent of their rent, and if they can't do that, they have to sign an affidavit under threat of perjury, a penalty of perjury, I should say, if they are not challenged in that way. So and landlords are provided with a tax credit that they can use in the future to kind of augment that lost revenue, income, and at the beginning of the year, those tenants are required to make a good paid effort to pay all the back rent back over a period of time. Another piece of legislation I introduced was especially in helping small businesses. As we all know, small businesses were hit the hardest. It's estimated that sixty percent of all small businesses that have closed or reduced services will probably not reopen due to COVID nineteen. So we wanted to make sure that we provided some kind of relief, because even with the PPP from the federal government, the majority of that money never found its way to small businesses, let alone minority-owned businesses. Majority of that money went to major corporations that many of whom had to return it, because they really didn't need it at the end of the day. So the governor signed my piece of legislation, which is S B fourteen forty-seven, which is the small business hiring tax credit. It affords any business that's had a fifty percent loss in revenue over the last calendar year, whoever rehires or hires new starting January one, they can apply for a thousand dollar credit for each new or rehire all the way up until December thirty first. So and it will help businesses tremendously, because many of those businesses, as stated, are the lifeblood of our communities, and they were challenged with how they keep their doors open. So that's a hundred million dollars in that pot that's available to small businesses throughout the state of California. Another piece of legislation, again, was to Senate, Assembly, Joint Landlord and Tenant, peaceful legislation, as I already stated. Also, S B eleven fifty-seven, which was the credit reporting for low-income renters and households. This is the first in this nation. As we all know, renters, many whom might live in an apartment or a house for years at a time and never build any credit, even though they pay their rent on time every month, but let them be late one time, and they're quickly deemed or have their credit, late payment reported to a credit agency. This is the first in this nation where we will now reward those tenants who pay their rent on time. It's a voluntary program that allows those landlords to report the on-time payments of their tenants to a credit board to help establish credit. As we all know, without credit, you'll never own a home. There was some opposition to saying that once people establish credit, the first thing they want to do is go out and buy a new stereo or a car. I found that very insulting. No, what most people want to do, once they establish credit, is hopefully qualify for a home one day. So that was S B eleven fifty-seven, which the governor signed. Also, one that's critically important was S B two oh three. That's juvenile interrogation. Up until the passage of this legislation, if you were under the age of eighteen and you were arrested and you were brought in for questioning, a minor would be asked to waive their Miranda rights without the consultation or being able to consult with a attorney or at least a responsible adult. We found that very irresponsible, and the governor agreed. We all know what happened twenty years ago in New York with Central Park Five, where you had teenagers who were coerced into a false confession of a crime they did not commit. So this affords any young person under the age of eighteen to first consult with an attorney before waiving their Miranda rights, because we all agree, we know plenty of adults who don't understand what it means to waive one's Miranda rights. Next one was S B twelve forty-four. This is the cannabis testing and consumer safety. Regardless of where you fall on this issue, whether it's for adult use or medicinal use, the one thing we all should be concerned about is a safe and reliable product that consumers receive. This bill will afford the testing of these products before they hit the street with various local testing agencies within law enforcement departments, because this is the only way that we will be able to combat the legal market, which is truly dominating a lot of what's happening in the street today. So it was sponsored by City Attorney Mike Fuer with the City of L. A., and again, it allows us to use testing facilities, licensed testing facilities, to make sure consumers receive a safe product, whether it's again from a disciple or adult use. Next is S B eleven ninety-two, which is the benefit and relief association. This helps our frontline first responders, our men and women who put the uniform on, whether it's law enforcement or fire department, and making sure that if they're injured, they get the rightful benefits that they deserve. It's been a lot of times, these officers and firefighters are injured on the job, and they qualify for long-term disability, but many times they, for whatever reason, it wasn't honored. So working with the Department of Insurance and our Insurance Commissioner, Ricardo Lara, we were able to get that passed to make sure that, again, those men and women who are injured on the job receive the benefits of what they so duly deserve and earn. Those were the six pieces of legislation. As I stated, I had seven. Number seven, that didn't make it to the governor's desk, only because it didn't get a vote on the last night on the Assembly floor, was my police decertification bill, S B seven three one, which has garnered nationwide attention. And I want to thank all of the entertainment industry, from Aloe Black to L. A. Lakers, Kyle Kuzma, Kim Kardashian, Billie Eilish, all who came on board. I don't know if you're aware, California is one of only four states in the nation, it doesn't, five states, I should say. It doesn't have a decertification program, program for getting rid of bad officers, not good officers, bad officers. And we should all agree, just as we know they're bad teachers, they're bad lawyers, they're bad elected officials. We have to admit they're bad police officers as well. And this will provide a fair and transparent way with citizen involvement, as well as law enforcement, to review and determine whether these men and women deserve decertification. And if you talk to most law enforcement officers, they will agree with this process, but due to this, like I said, abbreviated legislative session, we couldn't fill the halls of the Capitol with all the constituents that would have come there, the mothers and parents and offspring, lost loved ones to unjustified police shootings and killings and wrongful convictions. So we will be reducing, I mean, reintroducing that piece of legislation at the beginning of legislative session, and I hope we can garner the support of the City of Compton and entire council to support this legislation, which again, has tremendous support, again, Kim Kardashian, you name it, Robert De Niro, Aloe Black. I want to really thank Aloe Black, Kendrick Lamar, all the folks who came on board early and supported this measure of Black Lives Matter. All of us are none, and we'll be reintroducing that again first of the year. So that quickly summarizes my year, what we've done in Sacramento, and I'll be more than happy to take any questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator, for your robust report on activities in the legislature. Obviously, there has been a lot of good work that has been completed on behalf of the residents within your district, and we most certainly are looking forward to the additional reform measure coming forward at the top of the legislation period. I know that there's only so much that can be done within that time period, but we know that that is very critical for just accountability and ultimately to improve safety for our residents. So looking forward to that coming forward once more. Are there any members of the council that would like to address our senator at this time, or city attorney as well?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I want to just say thank you for being here and thank you for actually sharing this information with us. And I know that I'm looking forward to your bill coming forward when you come back for your session, so I'm looking forward to that. And for one, one person, I will be definitely supporting you on that. So thank you. But I just thank you for all the work that you've done, Senator Bradford, because you've really, really been a person there in the Senate that has done a tremendous job, and I just want to say thank you for that.
Thank you for your friendship and your collaboration over the years, and thank you for your support and all the great work that you do on behalf of this.
Thank you.
Attorney Brown?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Attorney Brown, and then Counselwoman McCoy will be next. I just saw your hand. Forgive me.
I'll defer to Counselwoman McCoy.
As a good city attorney will.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Senator Bradford, I just want to say thank you for all that you do. You have definitely been a staple in our community. You're always there when we call upon you, and you're always there when we need you. And you have my support when the bill comes back also. So I just want to again say thank you and continue the great work.
Thank you. Appreciate the support. It's going to be critically important again. This is going to be a fair and transparent process that protects law enforcement as well as the community. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you again, Senator Bradford. I echo the sentiments of the council persons that spoke earlier, and thank you for all of your support. I know this year certainly in issues of interest to Compton residents as it relates to our cemeteries and those issues, the support that we receive from your office was certainly appreciated on that. And this council did issue resolutions supporting the reintroduction of S B seven thirty-one. So at the time when it does come back, I'm sure they will enthusiastically support another resolution supporting that measure, because it is critically important to make sure that we're able to hold law enforcement accountable and to protect the residents in that way. So I appreciate your commitment to that issue. One question that I did have is, are you in any way involved or have any information to provide? I know there were some efforts by the state to get some level of accountability or information from E D D about the slow sort of outlay of unemployment benefits, the backlog, the inability of Californians to make contact with someone at the agency to get updates about their claims. Is there anything that you are able to share about any developments on that, on that platform?
Well, the governor's been processing for a couple of weeks, and we're back processing now. Since COVID, this has been the number one complaint that we've heard, the slow processing of E D D, but also the fraud that was going on, and that's what caused a lot of the suspension of benefits. But if you contact my office, that's the number one issue that they're working on on a daily basis, addressing constituents' need and assisting them with direct contact to a E D D person to help them navigate what can be a very cumbersome and difficult process. So that's what we're doing on a daily basis. My office is available for that assistance. Regardless of what number you call, there's someone there to walk any constituent through this process, whether you live in the thirty-fifth Senate District or anywhere in the state of California. We're here to help with that process, and hopefully, I haven't got all the full details on what the governor's findings were during that suspension, but a total amendment of revamping and making this far more responsive and kind of like weaning out some of the fraud that was taking place as well.
Thank you, Senator, once more for joining us. We look forward to seeing you at the conclusion of the next session. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I have my hand raised.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
I didn't see it, because I said on go, hi, Senator, how are you?
I'm doing well. How you doing?
Doing good. They're doing, I'm doing well. I'll be present in a minute. They're going to fix my Zoom here, but I just wanted to say thank you so much for your leadership. This has been a challenging year for California with COVID and wildfires and criminal justice issues, but still, you all held fast, held the line, you know, fought for a budget for the people. So I just want to say thank you for that, and also really want to give you a thank you, special thank you for always sponsoring legislation that is directly district-focused. Your legislation directly impacts our residents here in the City of Compton, and I just want to thank you for that, because we have to be at the front of something to support our and protect our own from the future of what can come. So with that said, thank you for your job all done. You made it. You did it. Thank you for being here in the City of Compton this evening.
Thank you, and I also want to express the collaboration. I can do it by myself, so I appreciate the open line of communication that I've had with this entire council since I've been your senator, and even before I represented the City of Compton, we had great working relationships. So I want to continue that. This is a job of public service. I often say you do this job for one or two reasons, to be something or do something. I want to do something. So thank you for allowing me to do something, and we will continue to do that. Before I leave you, I also want to extend an invitation to all the residents of Compton. I will be doing my annual turkey giveaway. I just have the date in front of me. Not that coordinated, but it's probably going to be that week leading up to Thanksgiving, and we're going to be doing it at the Cardina Cart Museum here on Caesar Boulevard in Vermont. So we want to make sure that we know during this COVID situation, it's only exacerbated to me for folks who need this assistance. So again, we'll be doing that again, and it's about need, not greed. Thank you.
Thank you. Take care and stay safe.
Thank you. Have a good night. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you.
How's the little one?
Oh, she's doing well. Just turned two. So busy, busy.
All right. Take care.
Hi, Senator.
Goodbye. Thank you, guys, again. Appreciate it.
Madam City Clerk, we are ready for you at your cadence.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can you still hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
We're now at public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. And prior to me meeting, reading the comments, I'd like to state that all comments are read as submitted, and I suggest that everyone proofread their comments before submitting them. I cannot change the content of your comments. And with that being said, our first speaker is Stacy Weems. It is a violation of civil rights for Cornwell to continue to bring up in my background and use it against others falsely. I am asking that any reference to me in this document be removed as the information is false. In addition, Mayor Brown acts like she is for Black Lives Matter and people of color. She is the mayor of a city with black and brown people who may have commented, who may have committed crimes. It is a violation of our civil rights to be discriminated against, especially after you served your time. And the issue was over thirteen years ago, and the crime had nothing to do with my job. At this point, it is not just harassment of the employee. I feel harassed. I think there is a policy against what Craig Cornwell is doing. I complained about this at the Personnel Board back in February twenty twenty, and now I am complaining to the City Council. The city manager in two thousand eight, Charles Evans, was aware of my background and approved me to be hired. Why is Craig Cornwell continuing to bring up my past and allow to lie about it and use it against someone else? The city council needs to supervise their employee and make sure that he stops this conduct and remove any reference to me or my past from this document. The city is a mess and needs to be cleaned up. He is wasting taxpayers' dollars, possibly getting us sued because he has a problem with people that are not perfect. I also read where he said criminals are working for the city. There are a whole lot of employees who have turned their lives around. He should be ashamed of himself. Our next speaker, my name is Brooke McDuffie, third district resident. I am going to mention the council's comments about last week's meeting about street repairs. What's the update on drainage and gutters for the city? Was that in the budget? What needs to be done for that to happen? Because rainy seasons will be here, and my street of Ammantha between Compton Boulevard and one hundred and fifty-fourth floods so bad that my car Because rainy seasons will be here and my street of Amantha between Compton Boulevard and 154th floods so bad that my car breaks rust. I'm sure I'm not the only resident who deals with this. Do I need to get signatures, put a request, what? Also, I do think we should start contracting business, contacting business about their deplorable properties. Like I mentioned previously, CVS on Alondra and Food for Less on Rosecrans are just two of the businesses that have left their properties go. I know those are code violations that need to be addressed. So when can, when can that start? Event announcement. For those who have decorated their homes for Halloween, please enter the house decorating contest being done on Compton. Deadline is this Sunday, the 18th. Contact Compton Community at yahoo.com for more information. I'll continue to follow up on these issues. Happy Tuesday, everyone. Our next speaker is Jeremiah Pratt, District 1, Mayor and City Council. One more week and your City Manager still has his gun wielding rogue employee working out, working out of the soon to be recalled Councilmember Michelle Chambers' office. At this meeting, there is an item to renew and extend a contract for Screamin' Eagles Services, Inc. for hauling services for $356,667 to pick up trash in every part of the city except District 2. Councilmember Galvane, Councilmember Sharif, before you vote, ask yourself how many other city contractors outside of this, outside of this one have threatened and bullied you on social media? Your City Manager is getting in the habit of making sure you don't feel safe carrying out your duties as a council member by allowing his employee and city contractor to threaten and bully you. Screaming Eagles has been picking up trash and dumping it at the city yard. Why is this? Does Republic Waste also dump our bulky trash at the city yard? City Council, ask yourself, how many city employees can you bring back to work for $356,667 whose only job could be to pick up? At the last council meeting, City Clerk Alita Godwin said her office would be, would still be involved in conducting the election, the nomination process for all city elections. How many employees does she need to do a nomination process? Alita Godwin should not only volunteer to give up at least one deputy for the sake of the budget, but also practice reading our comments in advance. There is no reason our email comment should be chopped up and read like a third grader at the council meeting. Lastly, City Attorney Damon Brown does not live in the city of Compton. Damon Brown lives at 728 Val Vista Street, Pomona, California. Asked his neighbors in Pomona, he lied under oath with his hand on the Bible in the City Clerk's office and should be reported to the State Bar Association and the District Attorney. Signed the recall petition for Michelle Chambers, she doesn't live here and her gun wielding assistant is terrorizing the community. Our next speaker is Connie Halbig. First, may I say thank you, Alita, for your concern about me and my health. No on any bonds for the city. This is only in the best interest of Asia Brown, Craig Cornwell, and Michelle Chambers. We do not need any bonds. This comment is about the April election. It was stated that there will be a large cost for this. I have a big solution to this. Give back all the monies that have been taken from your special projects to make you look as if you are doing something. And awarding monies to your friends and families for things to be done, be half done. Asia, you paid for the special election in April from the extra businesses you have that aren't closed down as of yet. When is this marijuana business going to be closed down by Rosecrans Bridge across from the chicken place that I often see the sheriffs hanging out whenever I cross the bridge east? This looks really bad to see this green cross up there as I cross and nothing is done about it. I know you are aware of it. Please don't try to tell me that nothing can be done about it. Just close it down. Makes the city look bad. Or is that what you want? Also, do something about the one on Wilmington where I see it is still, they're brightly lit up like Christmas. I know this has been brought up many times. If you can't do your jobs, then please step down before the people have you step down. I would also like to see Doug Sanders give a report instead of sitting like a bump, bump on that log. With all that is going on in the city with COVID-19, why are we still opening businesses? You don't care about the people, Asia Brown. Do your duty and mandate masks. Now, Alita, I have made comments so you know I am back. As usual, I will be watching and listening for answers. Our next comment comes from Annie Franklin. Please read prior to closed session. If no closed session, please read at com, at public comments. I am writing because I am very concerned about fraud being committed by a city contractor in collusion with city official, officials, specifically Screamin' Eagles, who is on contract to clean alleys and pick up trash. What appears to be illegal is that their high dollar contract, $300,000 to $400,000 includes payment for dump fee. However, they are using the city yard as a dump, thereby avoiding paying dump fees. If this is not true, I would like copies of their dump receipts. Councilman Galvane has questioned their lack of paying their dump fees in the past. However, the taxpayers have never received confirmation that Screamin' Eagles is double dipping. Your street superintendent questioned them dumping in the yard and was told to mind his own business. I thought the yard was his business. We know the relationship to the mayor, to the Mayor Brown and Chambers. They helped them with dirty work in their campaigns and were rewarded with a contract. One regularly exhibit vulgar behavior on social media. He harasses and threatens people and calls them gypsies and many other behaviors that prove he is mentally challenged hooligan. City Hall has gone to the dogs. No respect, no professionalism, no regard for the public. From the mayor and council's office or their staff, get rid of Craig and restore some sense of professionalism. Disgusted and supporting the recall. Your management staff is top heavy and you should consider getting rid of one ACM or your budget officer and hire two more custodians who can work to quell ground zero and coronavirus in Compton. You obviously do not need a budget officer. He walks around City Hall all day, does jobs that are not a budget officer's responsibilities, employee's ID. He makes far too much to be walking around violating employees' rights and hiring his friends and relatives. Stop the abuse of power, get rid of waste and redirect funds where they are needed most. Getting City Hall into COVID compliance targeted. Our next speaker, Mayor and Council. My name is Dale Sherrigan and I reside in the, and I reside in the 4th District. I am writing because of my displeasure with the lack of action taking place for all parties who participated in the scheme against Councilwoman Sharif. I am highly disappointed with Councilwoman Sharif for not requesting appropriate action be taken as the responsibility for action falls directly upon her as she was the victim. Councilwoman Sharif, you continue to fully disappoint your constituents. Weakness is not a positive leadership trait. City Attorney, I hope there is a place for you at your old firm. You have done very little to represent the people of Compton. We have marijuana dispensaries operating daily that you and your team have not attempted to close. Anyone with a legal background should know the law and the means available to you to be successful in this endeavor. Rumor has it that the mayor's husband is actively involved in three or more of these illegal dispensaries. Additionally, you have failed to act on the behalf of the people by displaying, disciplining all parties that participated in the Sharif scandal. This entire council is self-serving and all, and all do very little to improve or impact the real quality of life issues for the residents of Compton. None of you should run for reelection. Mayor Brown, you continue to lead with one-way thinking. In your weekly Facebook update, you thank everyone who sent a letter in to retain the City Manager while encouraging residents to participate and demand more. It is clear that you are only appreciate, that you only appreciate those who share your vision and you are totally unaware that in a democracy, all voices are important and participation from all should be encouraged. I hope you don't plan to run, I'd hope you don't plan on running again and making promises you can't keep. You have had eight years to build a team, accomplish your promises to the people of Compton. You lack diplomacy and true heart. I hope you learn how to embrace your constituents, young, old, black, brown, who do not share your vision. Many of us would support your vision if you were a compassionate team player and leader. However, you operate by concurring and dividing people to create your power. You must learn that you need all of Compton and not just the youth of Compton. I am not an elder and I am highly offended by your comments of Compton elders. You have failed Compton terribly. Please ask your liaison to stop trolling Facebook and allowing people to post their opinions without her attacks. Please know you all did Compton a disservice by retaining Mr. Cornwell. Time will reveal, this is, time will reveal this to everyone, including the 16 Latino residents who signed your liaison's mother's letter Rebecca Reyes, asking the DA to retain him. Finally, Michelle Chambers participated in this madness was, participation in this madness was questionable and criminal. Please place this letter in the official record and please read at the council meeting. Lynn Boone, you should hold a recall drive and sign events. Many residents want to sign, but do not know how to reach you. Do more and get this valuable information out and in the hands of residents. Are there any real Compton groups that fully represent the people that do not have ties to City Hall? You can't be an advocate for the people and work in City Hall. To think so is truly misleading. People of Compton, vote every last one of these worthless district representatives out of office. All they can bring to the table is a food giveaway. Our next comment comes from Robert Ray. Item number four. Why do we have to pay to import water when Compton is sitting on millions of cubic feet of water and has so many of its own water wells? Item number eight. If the city had not laid off so many employees, this contract would not be necessary. Item number 10. I read a lot of words, but I did not see any actual plans. It's time for action, not talk. Every registered voter should have received their vote by mail ballot. I want to suggest that everyone complete their ballot and return it ASAP. Please make sure you sign the envelope, date the envelope, and put your address on the envelope. Vote by mail is safe in Compton. I mailed in my ballot and already got confirmation that it was received and will be counted. I'm hoping our April municipal election will also be an all mail, an all vote by mail election. It is safe and will save the city lots of money. More than 216,000 Americans have now died from COVID-19. This pandemic is still real. Wear your mask when you go out and avoid large groups of people. Our next comment comes from Susan Adams to Mayor and Council. First, I want to say thank you, Councilwoman Sharif and Craig Cornwell for getting the alley cleaned behind houses addressed 400 to 422 South Point Setia Avenue. We understand that a study will be completed soon with a favorable resolve. To date, a recent report indicated that there are 42 illegal marijuana dispensary with direct coalition to murders and other crimes. There is a major trend that has occurred over recent years and it appears that mayor, council, city attorney, and city manager appear not to be moved or concerned to have several illegal businesses breaking Compton's ordinance. I am proposing that NACIA be reinstated to act on illegal marijuana dispensaries and other crimes that plague our city. NACIA organizations, organization are well respected and has a relationship with the FBI Drug Task Force, Sheriff Department, and other law enforcement agencies. We need timely initiate, initiation of civil warrants and criminal warrants. The city's grade for their performance in this area is A F. I am hearing that council will be proposing marijuana related products and businesses on April 2020, 2021 ballot. I do pray that this is not true. The two bond measures proposals is under COVID-19 shows that 98% of the registered voters in Compton are not allowed, are not aware or allowed significant community, community decisions. It is unfair as state, as stakeholders in this community that a proposal of about $68 million is being proposed and discussed without hearing voices from the citizens of Compton. Ultim, ultimately, we the citizens will be responsible for any missed loans, any missed loan payments and misappropriation of funds. The city's credit rating is not the best and projects or wish list has, has had been shared with the citizens. This is not the cities, citizens' projects, but mayor and council's project. This debt will inherit the generations to come. Citizens need to be allowed to voice their comments in person as other cities. It is unfair to make $68 million debt without hearing from the citizens. And our last comment. My name is Crystal Hodges and I am the Community Library Manager at the Compton Library. As you all know, the election is coming up. Located right outside of the Compton Library entrance, there is an official election drop-off box. On Thursday, October the 15th, 2020 at 3:00 PM, please join us in PBS SoCal for a special reading and collaboration to celebrate the end of Hispanic Heritage Month. Learn about shapes with a fun hands-on activity by PBS SoCal and discover lively music, delicious food, and vibrant colors through a live reading by Kid Time Storytime. For additional information on how to sign up, please visit our Facebook page at Compton Library. We will also gift a children's book to the first 50 families that register. Children from kindergarten through the 12th grade are invited to celebrate books, reading, and art by participating in our annual bookmark contest. Participants will compete for a chance to see their bookmark designed featured at their local library and across LA County. The deadline for submission is November the 15th, 2020. Lastly, if you haven't heard by now, you can now check out a kit with a Chromebook and wireless hotspot to access the internet plus chargers inside a handy carrying case from the Compton Library. Borrow for three weeks with the option to renew if available. Currently, there is a waiting list as supplies are limited, but we are working to add more devices in the future. Also, using our wireless printing services from SmartAlex, you can send, you can send a print job from your laptop, tablet, or mobile devices to our library in a range and a countless, I'm sorry, a contact pickup. Pickup, I'm sorry, print up to 10 free pages per day, black and white. Staff cannot. Staff cannot selectively print individual pages from within a multi-page document. So be sure to upload only the pages you want to print. We care about your privacy. Documents submitted to print are automatically converted to PDF and deleted within twenty-four hours after they are uploaded. Any printed documents that aren't picked up within three business days are shredded. A library card is needed for this service. If you do not have a library card, please visit our website at LACountyLibrary.org and/or give us a call at three ten six three seven zero two zero two. Thank you. Madam Mayor, that completes our comments and we are now at consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Consent items are routine and expected to be non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the council at one time without discussion unless a council member requests for an item to be removed or discussed.
Madam Mayor, we are pulling item number four off of consent.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is it a motion on consent?
No.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Councilperson Chambers.
Yes.
Galván.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
And under regular agenda, our first item under City Manager's Report is a PowerPoint presentation. Biz Nano Coating, Councilperson Galván.
Yes, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. Councilperson Galván has requested a PowerPoint presentation from the business regarding coatings that they can place in public facilities to assist with our COVID-19 battle and other health concerns. I believe a representative is on.
We're here, do you want us to start?
Please.
This is John Paul from Biz Nano, I have been the CEO and Tukale and our COO and the rest of the Biz Nano team here. What you have here is the lengthy detailed presentation. So it's got all the technical details, but I'm just going to go through a brief description of what we provide as a company. We essentially provide a solution that is different from everybody else. Given what's happened with the pandemic and the effects on schools and families nationwide, we thought this would be the right time to bring our line and our system of products into public municipalities, governments, schools, and all the other public spaces, wire, disinfecting and cleaning. So essentially, if you look at the traditional way that disinfection and cleaning is done, it requires a constant cleaning from the time human contact or traffic is coming to a space. So part of that issue is, how do you clean? You use normally a chemical, which in and of itself kills the bacteria or the viruses. And then from there, you would have to do it at regular intervals and continue to do so because every time you stop, it's basically vulnerable for reinfections. So what we found was, with our solution, we do it a different way. As the traditional solutions are all chemical-based and VOC-based, those introduce toxic chemicals in the environment that of themselves are also hazardous to the people, the students, and every inhabitant that is in those spaces. Moreover, once those spaces and surfaces are retouched and reintroduced with human traffic, what happens is the pathogens come back. And so you find yourself in this circle. Come in, have more service re-clean, re-wipe, and retouch. And at the same time, you're reintroducing toxins back in the environment in the, in the form of VOCs. My wife gave me a bottle of hand sanitizer today that she wanted me to use, and I swear it was probably more deadly than anything it was cleaning. So strong that the smell was overwhelming. So what Biz Nano provides is a system. What Biz Nano provides are coatings, high-tech coatings, that as you'll see in the video that we provided previously, that is applied to any surface from textile, organic, wood, plastics, vinyl, metal. Surface that you touch, walked on, or handled can be coated with our coating. A family of coatings that are different for each application. Some are clear, so for school desks, for chairs and tables, for hospitals, for public buildings. And the beautiful thing about this is, all of our coatings are natural. So our coatings that we most use, you can actually drink it, they're safe. They're made of organic chemicals. They do not actually work through chemical action. So let me say this again. They do not have to be constantly re-cleaned because once you're coating the surfaces that you want clean, they work for several months, up to several years, to become cleaners themselves. So for example, in your city council offices, let's say you have a desk, chair, and wall. Once we clean it once and we treat it, depending on how much touch and how much abrasion you apply, it will work for several months. Each of those surfaces will continue to clean the air. And the way it works is through a physical reaction we call photocatalysis. Photocatalysis basically means that it reacts with UV lights, which can either be through sunlight or we can put a small fixture. And what happens is, it creates a strong oxidation reaction which lisses and destroys viruses and bacteria on contact. Also means it removes all of the funky smells from gyms, from restrooms, from just spaces where there's a lot of humans in it. MRSA, COVID, H1N1, the entire Corona family of viruses, particulates. And we have, as you can see from some of the videos we've seen, we've got a meter that reads particulates and VOCs. And you can see that, you know, in a police car, let's say, pre-treatment, what those levels are. And those levels are not just a result of the particulates and toxins in the air. They're also from the actual cleaning materials that they've used to reclaim the police cars and the classrooms and the school buses. So what we're talking about is having a system that actually lasts for months. And in some cases, depending on the application, let's say, on ceilings that you don't touch, it will last for years. So you don't have to significantly increase your custodial staff and disinfection staff, but rather, you can have your surfaces take care of themselves for a reasonable amount of time. So you don't have to keep re-cleaning and re-cleaning all the time. Any questions so far?
Are there any council questions or comments at this time?
Is it over, the presentation?
No, he just asked for questions or comments.
Not at this time.
So, how you guys doing? Thank you for taking, for presenting our product. The product, the coating we have, it's a, it works twenty-four seven. It's a titanium dioxide-based silo ryan, which once we apply you to doorknobs, any kind of organic or non-organic surfaces, I can apply this to your doorknobs and it's good for three months. Anybody opens up, touches a doorknob, it's going to keep killing all the bacterias and viruses. So you won't have to worry about cleaning three times a day, five times a day. So the labor factor is the most expensive portion of the, this whole disinfecting site. By us applying to city councils and the chairs and tables and all that, average, the savings are about four thousand dollars every three months. We will come reapply. We just got a contract for more dilute of heat to go for. We can apply throughout the hospital, about three hundred thousand square feet of the hospital. We can apply our product, which they, if you see the video presentations, we have the city, the hospital did their own, they didn't use, and then they could not find any. Then our product, the product is, it's been used and plus forty years of, it's been around about forty years. And it's been used all over the world wide. We're just trying to introduce the product to, to a more bigger kind of a market to try to start the disinfection. It's not only we're trying to get the business, but we want to ensure our kids going back to school, they're safe. And city employees and any kind of, any, any kind of an employee goes back to work, we want to ensure they're safe from any kind of viruses or any kind of VOCs and all kinds of. And this product we have is by mold. What it does is as soon as the virus.
Okay.
Excuse me. So finally, the, the product is safe. It's environmentally safe as we have, we include all the bacterias and viruses and all kinds of it kills. So I don't know, if you have any other questions, we can.
The one thing I did want to reiterate and, and said is you can clean in the morning, you can clean in the evening. But what happens is during the interchange of the first schools, for example, when the kids exchange periods, they sit at the desk, you can't send somebody to clean right after for the next student sitting in that seat. What our product does, twenty-four seven, it's literally working. So when the next student comes in with the flu or a virus or, you know, some kind of a bacteria, it kills upon contact immediately. So the next student is safe when they exchange periods because you're not going to have custodial service. Yeah, same with city employees. When you have, especially with the public and they're coming into the counter, you could make sure your staff and the people inside in the waiting rooms and the lines are safe at the same time. Because we, we have two products that work. I recommend you have one on the ceiling and one on the surfaces. This is our clear coat surface. And another one is the one for the ceiling. This also comes with a benefit. We're working on right now, it's a cool roof. When you put this on top of the roof, that's well, it cools down the inside of the building by thirty percent. It's maybe saving energy and temperature, as we all know. So there's a lot, I mean, we don't have enough time to get into the detail. We did Huntington Beach Department, PD cars. Huntington Park, I'm sorry. And then we did the Huntington Beach buses and we did. Oh, sorry, we did the Huntington Beach buses. And then we also did, he's a high prestigious doctor and their VOCs were off the chart. You can see the video right now. Our VOC reader can even read that's how high the VOCs were in the building. All right. Any questions before we start the videos?
Have you finished? That was the, the end of the presentation?
There's one more video, we want to show the results on a video, I believe. I don't know if we can play, we can share our screen or it's up to you guys, however you want.
They have it, we don't have control.
Okay.
There's a video portion.
So this is the process of how it's applied. It's actually quite simple, but. Shows you the unsafe levels of VOCs, particulates before.
You can put on fabric, chairs, seating. It dropped down to point zero five from being over the.
Being from unsafe to safe.
We had sent some previous videos for you guys to view on your own at your own time, your own time, your own time, your own time, your own time. Vehicles. We also did the Huntington Beach school buses. And it also indicates and shows you the VOC required, tells applying the product and then it shows how it drops.
The important thing is, there is no other product line and system on the market today. So once you apply, it continues to clean itself. It acts as cleaner to the air that hits it and surrounds it. Everybody else requires you to reapply at a regular interval. If you think about the cost and the practicality, it's hard to expand and start new. This is a far more practical solution, as well, far more effective solution because it's everything you've touched with this coating, this material, in and of itself becomes a cleaner.
Thank you all for the presentation, very informative. I don't know if there are any council questions or comments at this time?
Yeah, I, I had some comments that I wanted to make. Back in March, when the pandemic first hit us, they had, this company reached out to me about disinfecting a building in the city of Compton. So I talked to the city manager and at the time, the, the, it was a mention that the YAL may be a place for the, that we were going to do food giveaways and work in collaboration with the sheriffs to kind of make that like a, like a hub in my district to do a lot of events, but obviously that didn't turn out to be the case. And the company went down there and totally disinfected the whole Oscar de la Hoya Gymnasium with their coating and stuff. And when I had got the presentation and seen them do it, oh, they did it for free too. They didn't charge the city a single dime. They did it absolutely free. Craig didn't pay with his discretionary funds, nothing like that. They did it absolutely one hundred percent free. Their coating lasts for ten years. And I thought, you know, with the spike in cases, and I know we just had another outbreak in the Compton yard of another employee getting coronavirus. And I know that we had a lot of employees in the city of Compton, in City Hall, get coronavirus. And I know we have different people going in and out of City Hall every single day, whether it's to pay a bill, go to Building and Safety, whether they work there, whether they have appointments with the council, city manager, city staff. And their coating, they apply it to, I believe, the ceiling or the wall and any bacteria that's in the air, it dies right on the scene. So if somebody goes in there that has coronavirus or the flu and they cough, as soon as the, the breath leaves their mouth, the. leaves their mouth, the coating that's activated on the roof, it actually kills the bacteria in the air. And they had a great presentation, too, when they got a enclosed box and they lit two cigarettes, one cigarette just in a regular box, closed and sealed, and the other cigarette in the same box, closed and sealed, but it had the coating in the wall. And when I went back to smell it, the one with the coating, there was absolutely zero odor, which was crazy. And the one in the box obviously smelled a lot like cigarettes. So that was a good presentation. I know we have a flu season coming up, too, and I just think we're gonna have another outbreak again. So I thought that we should take every step necessary to make City Hall safe for the employees, for the residents, and for anybody that wants to, you know, come and do business in the city. So I asked Craig if he could put them on the agenda so they can talk about their product and, you know, talk a little bit how it does. And I know it has a ten-year guarantee, right?
It has a ten-year warranty on whatever we apply to your ceilings. But then that's then the other product has three months warranty whenever there is a lot of human contacts. If there is not a lot of human contacts, it's year and a half warranty. So your curtains, your cubicles can be done every year and a half. Whatever your desk and chairs and computers can be done in every three months.
Same with the restrooms.
And then you just restrooms too. And then you just have to reapply it every three months. Amount of savings for personnel to do this. It's almost four thousand dollars savings every three months.
Yeah. And then I know that like, just from what I hear from the city manager, when somebody has an outbreak in one of their departments or something, they pay a company to come in and disinfect it and clean it. But with this coating, that wouldn't be necessary because they could do it one time. And, you know, it'll last for the length of time he just said. So I just thought it was a good idea and something the city should consider very strongly. And yeah, I know that with the video, the connection wasn't that good. So the presentation came in and out a lot. I don't know whose fault that is, but I know that it's a really good product. And I think that it would really be a benefit to the city, especially with the outbreak in coronavirus coronavirus cases that we had and with flu season approaching. I think that it's we should do everything we can do to keep our employees safe. And that's my comments.
Thank you. Any council questions or comments? Thank you all for the oh, yes, Councilwoman Sharif.
I did have a question because I'm I didn't know when you when he was talking about the product itself. I was looking at the safety of it because I don't know what businesses they have already done have been able to do this with. And I did ask the city manager about that earlier today is that I would like to know of what are the businesses that they have actually have been able to use this product and how's that going in those other city other entities? I mean, is it a different entities they with? I know they talked about the buses they are they have been doing, but I'm just wondering if there's any other entities that they have actually I've been working with. And if so, how's it going over there? Because in looking at the product, I'm just I'm just wondering the safety of the product itself. That's that's what my concern was about. And maybe I can give more information on that. I'll get it to the city manager and he shared that information with me. I really would appreciate.
We done we have a one-point-five-million-dollar contract with Martin Luther King Hospital. Uh, we have contracts with McCarran Airport. We have uh the next person that wanna use is Glendale Unified School District. Uh, we got approved by the Unified School District to apply to their facilities. They did all kinds of laboratory tests and they did all kinds of laboratory tests. You can?
Hold on.
He he cuts out, but I I can get it. But he said that there's laboratory tests that's been done on the uh the chemicals and everything that you guys are using. Am I is that correct? Is that's what I'm understanding?
Yes, ma'am. The the test was done by us and but the test was done by Glendale Unified School District and LAUSD. After the test was done, they approved us to apply to their uh school district. And we do have, I don't know if you heard, we have a contract with various hospitals and groups, including Martin Luther King Hospital, including McCarran Airport, and Vahus. We applied it in various businesses too. But the main thing is besides our own laboratory testers, the testing was done by LAUSD and London USD and both approved that because with the MSDS sheet, it shows it's all organic, non-chemical, no VOC. So all the testing
Which is this?
So Did you guys hear what I said?
Yes, I I did. Thank you. She said she drank it. She drunk it?
Yeah, it's it's all organic.
I believe. That's okay.
It doesn't work through chemical action.
It's a it's a the way it works is most of the cleaning products that work because there's a chemical reaction, the way it works. Our product is a physical reaction. So no, no, no chemicals, nothing harmful for any kind of animals, humans, or insects.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, Madam Mayor, may I ask? So after you after you sanitizers do the spray, I know Councilman Governor thinks they use a ten-year warranty or something or other?
So the ten-year warranty is on the product, which is this, is highly concentrated titanium dioxide. What happens is we apply this to the ceilings mainly. The reason why, if the bacterias and viruses are lighter than air, if there is a bacteria virus in the air, first it goes out before it comes down. So as soon as it hits the ceiling, it kills, turns everything, converts to carbon dioxide. So it kills instantly. So this is this is good for ten years. We we don't have to touch anything. We apply it one time and it's good for ten years. And we can do numerous tests as you like during the time to come. This product is a tiny titanium dioxide silver iron mixture, which is literally calling, you apply to the surfaces, organic down organic, including door knobs. I mean, anything you imagine. It goes on any kind of surfaces and it's a if there is a lot of high human traffic touching and working on the tables and all that, it's good for three months. After three months, if you reapply, you're not for another three months. But when you trust, when you spray this to a cubicles or walls or curtains or any any surface that is not a lot of human contact, it's good for a year, year and a half.
So once you spray, you you don't have to come back for do you come back periodically? The spray is quarterly or how often?
Every three months if there is a lot of human contact. If there are not too many human contacts every year.
Perhaps I can clarify. So this white product is for areas that aren't touched, there's not a lot of abrasion.
Oh, okay.
The reason why is because if you touch it, it kind of comes off of your hands, right? It's not applicable for things that have a lot of abrasion and contact. This is a clear that goes on things that are touched and handled almost on a daily basis. And it is slightly different in the way it works, but it's very similar. But the reason is it's more applicable for certain places where humans are touching it all the time, there's a lot of traffic. This can't this wire one cannot go on fabric. It can't go on your desk. It can't go on things that are, you know, because it'll 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 chalk off and come off, right? This stuff is for stuff where you have
Poise.
Exactly. Not your mouse, your keyboard, your your telephone, your cellphone. But we have we have a system for which we have a family of products that are applicable for whatever application you might have in city, in your schools. And it is economical enough that it's within the reach for even small businesses and smaller departments. Whereas if you were, let's say, a small city and you said, you know, we can't afford to have these guys come in once a week, five times a week. Here's your answer. We don't have to come back by every few months. But if we do, the white stuff, non-human contact, this is years.
And we have a seventeen-year data that still we applied it. It's still worth it to do today. It wasn't like seventeen years ago, but we just wanna be safe just for ten years.
Okay, thank you. You answered my questions. Thank you for that presentation. Thank you for giving this opportunity. We greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you also very much.
Item. Item number six, the oral report regarding the election financing update will will return next week. We don't have the numbers to present this week, but we will have to wait having all the numbers to council with options next week.
Thank you, City Manager. We look forward to your presentation next week. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item number four that was removed from consent. Agenda is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Compton authorizing the issuance of a purchase order to the Metropolitan Water District of Southern California to purchase imported water for the 2020-2021 fiscal year in the amount of five hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
I'll move.
Thank you.
Um, I thought this item was pulled. No?
It was just pulled from consent. It was just removed from consent.
Oh, okay. Understood. Okay, thank you. Discussion, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, we have Brian Dickerson, our general manager for the Water Department, that will provide the background for this item.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Yes, this is a regular item that we do yearly for MWD. As a member agency of Metropolitan Water District, we have three connections to the Metropolitan Water District. And that is for in case we cannot produce all our water supply through our wells. Because I've heard the comment from the resident earlier about we have the groundwater. Yes, we supply our residents with groundwater, but we have Metropolitan Water District in case we can't supply all of our water through our wells in case one of our one or more of our wells goes out of service. So we have to have money available to be able to purchase imported water from MWD. And as part of that, we also pay a monthly fee just as a ready-to-serve charge for our three connections that we have. So that is what this is for. We budget for on the high end in case our wells go out and we have to purchase MWD water, which is about twice the cost of what it costs us to produce groundwater.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any discussion or questions from the council? No, I understand. Thank you.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I just have one question. Citizen asked how many operating wells do we have? So could you please let them know how many operating wells we have?
Hold on. Six operating wells. One's currently out of service right now. And we're gonna be doing a rehabilitation on that later on in this fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And thank you for the question, Councilwoman McCoy. Roll call?
Councilperson Chambers?
Yes.
Galván?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Item number seven under new business is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Compton, County of Los Angeles, State of California, proclaiming September the fifteenth to October the fifteenth, 2020, as Hispanic Heritage Month in the City of Compton.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, City Council. I have received a request from Councilperson Sharif. And we had wanted to appreciate the United States Congress in creating Hispanic Heritage Month. Madam City Clerk, just read off the dates that it's and it's coming to a close. And I'd like to yield the floor to Councilperson Sharif at this time.
Uh, thank you, Mr. City Manager. I just wanted to make sure that we was actually giving credit where credit is due and because the Hispanic Americans have really really been very made a great contribution to the to the culture of the United States. And I think that we just really just wanted to make sure that we do not forget to recognize them doing this, their heritage month. So I really want to thank the City Manager for working and trying to make sure this got to the agenda so we could actually present this and to the council project, to the engine of this this event. So thank you.
Thank you. From what I understand, this is a national holiday now. It started out as Hispanic Heritage Week. And so this is applicable to all cities across the United States. So it's great to have something to memorialize this change. Any discussion?
I do. I just I just want to thank Councilwoman Sharif for bringing this item forward. As the only Latino city councilman ever elected in the city of Compton, I know how important it is to the Latino community, which is the majority in the city of Compton, to, you know, be recognized and let let it be known that our history as well matters. So I just really want to thank Councilwoman Sharif. And, you know, in the years I've been here, I know that like a lot of the Mexican holidays and Latino Heritage Month and stuff doesn't really get acknowledged or doesn't really get celebrated in the city of Compton. And I know right now we're in the middle of a pandemic. So I just hope going forward more that we can take more time and, you know, acknowledge our Latino community in the city of Compton. You know, we live in such a beautiful community, African-Americans, Latinos, working together, living side by side. And just I think it's what makes our city great, just having such a diverse community of people. I mean, it's been said, you know, throughout the media and stuff that we deal with the same struggles, the same challenges each day. And I think that we're stronger for having to deal with it together. So I just want to thank Councilwoman Sharif for bringing the item forward and my colleagues as well. And it's been an honor and a privilege to be the first Latino council member in the city of Compton. And hopefully, by me being the first, you know, it inspires the next generation that they can run for city council in Compton, too, and they'll have a chance. Because that was the the thing before that, oh, a Latino can never get elected in Compton. Well, I'm glad I was able to shatter that barrier. And I hope that I'm able to inspire the next generation that no matter what race you are in the city of Compton, you can achieve anything you want. So I just want to thank you guys. That's all.
And thank you, Councilwoman Sharif, again for bringing this item forward. Any additional?
Thank you.
Yes.
It's Madam Mayor, may I give a statement? I just want to say again, thank you, Councilwoman Sharif, for bringing this item forward. I agree with my colleague, Councilwoman Galván, that our Latino community is very instrumental and important in our community. I would like to give a shout out, if I may, to Ms. Dolores Armijo, Ms. James Chavez, Aurora Lucero, and Mr. Nider Romero, and Arbe- Arabella Romero, excuse me. And these women are Latino Mexican women who fought suffrage in Spanish for Latinos and women's right to vote. So that's just want to say, thank you, ladies. Thank you again, Councilwoman Sharif.
Roll call?
Councilperson Chambers?
Yes.
Galván?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Item number eight is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Compton authorizing the city manager to enter into a ten-month service contract with and establish a purchase order for Screamin' Eagle Services, Inc., for citywide abatement of legal dumping and ratify an emergency abatement contract. for citywide abatement of illegal dumping and ratify an emergency abatement contract entered into with Screamin' Eagle Services, Inc., in the amount of two hundred ninety-one thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Madam Mayor, City Council. Last fiscal year, this item came to the dais and the resolution authorized a contract for the remaining of nineteen-twenty fiscal year as well as an option year for this fiscal year, twenty-twenty-one. The option year was not authorized prior to June thirtieth. And it was recommended that we bring the item to council for authorization to continue through this fiscal year. Staff is preparing to do a request for proposal for next fiscal year. And there are a few options that we can consider. As council knows, we are working through alley closure project. And prior to this agreement being authorized, we had a multiple vendor in the city. I think we divided into a vendor contractor per two districts. So there's multiple options moving forward, or we can continue with this, but we are preparing an RFP for next fiscal year. And what is before you is a continuation of this fiscal year in light of the option year not being exercised in time.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, for the description. Any council comments or questions on this item?
I, I got a bunch of questions. Now, I know that, that this company was awarded a contract the second you took office as city manager, Craig, under your discretionary funds. You had mentioned, and I requested a copy of that RFP when you did your first report back to the council and we came back from break, your first year in office, that you did an RFP to hire somebody under your discretionary funds, which you don't have to do, but you said you did it, and you were gonna give me a copy of it, you didn't. And at the time this contract was awarded, this company had already received eighty thousand dollars from the City of Compton because they got two separate contracts, small ones. And I asked to see a copy of the dump receipts. And what you had brought to the council added up to under fifteen hundred dollars of dump receipts in the initial eighty thousand dollar contract you gave them. And they have made hundreds of thousands of dollars since then. And have they been turning in their dump receipts? And if so, can you provide them to the council? And I had asked you for copies of the dump receipts about, when you were on the agenda, the week before you were on the agenda, and you said you would send them to me. I have yet to receive them. So I was wondering if you can clear the air on that.
Dump receipts don't come to my office, but we can provide them. And I, I will provide them.
I think before the council votes on this contract and extension of it, I think that we should see the receipts because from what I seen with my own eyes, they're just picking up the trash when we have cleanups in Alameda and dumping it at the city yard. And they're supposed to dump it on their own and pay for the dumping of the trash. That's why they're getting paid close to twenty thousand dollars a month, a little bit over seventeen and a half thousand a month to do so. And I'm all for hiring local businesses and hiring local people to do work, but you have to maintain a certain code of ethics. The council, a few months, a month or two ago, wanted to bring an item for a code of ethics for the council. But we have vendors who are getting paid hundreds of thousands of dollars, not following similar basic respect for the council members. So I would, I would just feel more comfortable bringing this item back with the copy of the receipts because they're supposed to dump the trash on their own, not dump it at the city yard and just keep all the profits. That is not right.
I have the street superintendent, Damian Tenen, in the waiting room. He can respond to whether there's been dumping from the contractor in the public yard if council is interested.
Oh, absolutely. I'm definitely interested. And for all of the council that has attended even one cleanup in the city, it is just highly unlikely that all of the trash that is picked up throughout the city is dumped at the yard. There's only so much space at the city yards. I would love to hear his feedback. And then also, city manager, if you could also specify whether or not dump receipts are a requirement of the contract as well. I'd like to know that. Because if we're requesting some additional information that we have not requested at the onset, then we should amend our practices as well. If that's what a council member is requesting. Because I'm, I'm not personally, I'm concerned about whether or not the contract was competitive, whether or not it went out to bid. We have responsive bidders. We obviously made the best recommendation and selection. However, to get personal into someone's profit margin, I think that's beyond my purview. I'm not, I'm not interested in that.
I'm not getting, I'm not getting personal. It's just the facts. When they had the contract, when they made eighty thousand dollars because Craig gave them contracts under discretionary funds, he said he went out to RFP. These are not statements that I made. He did. He never gave me a copy of the RFP. When they brought the contract to get, was it a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar contract initially, or close to that amount? He said that they would be dumping and give receipts to the city. That day, they provided receipts which totaled under fifteen hundred dollars after collecting eighty thousand dollars from the city. This is not personal. As a city councilman, I mean, I know that people can attack us, say whatever they want about us. That's fine. This is about the people's money, the city's money. And I just want to make sure that they're not just, you know, dumping all the trash in the yard. We've seen them do it. So I'm just saying.
Madam Mayor.
It was a more than fair request.
I'd like to hear from the contractor, if we could, since there were allegations made.
Is he here?
No, I, the I had referenced the street superintendent. He's waiting.
Okay.
If he would.
I would like to hear from someone in the field.
Unmute and go to video.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Let me say this, is that I have been, and I've been talking to city, to the city manager about this. I even sent him several emails and everything because the complaints that I'm getting from the community over there, it does have to do with the the site where they have their trucks, trucks. And I've been having this conversation with the city manager about this for a while in regards to stuff being dumped on that, on that particular site over there. And so I, I, right now, I'm still trying to figure out what is really happening with that. And also too is that I noticed here, and I would like for the city manager to please try to, if he could clarify something for me. It says here, there's, it's just an additional sixty-five thousand dollars that you guys are asking for here in the contract for the an additional sixty-five thousand. It has to do with the abatement. Because my, my understanding was that the abatement was included in the contract. So, and that is another conversation I had with the city manager as well regarding that. Because I was concerned about the fact that a lot of the alleys that was being cleaned up, it was not being abated, and I did ask him about it. And so I was under the impression, and I thought that the abatement was already included in the contract. So are we asking for an additional sixty-five thousand dollars along with the two hundred ninety-one thousand dollars, Mr. City Manager?
No, we're not. We are ratifying two months of payment during this fiscal year. But actually, the contractor Screamin' Eagles has agreed to reduce their payment for this year. I believe the numbers are from four hundred and seventeen thousand to three hundred and fifty thousand. Given our financial challenges going into this year. The money comes from, is one of our Measure P projects, which council knows we have from last year, we've taken a majority of employees off of the Measure P funds. The only employees remaining on Measure P funds are actual street maintenance staff on the Measure P fund. So this contract is actually considered a project. It is not part of the general fund where
I, I can't understand it, but I'm just saying, I was wanting, I want, the question here, and the reason I'm asking, it says here, in the summary says additionally, city council ratification is sought for an emergency abatement service contract entered into with Screamin' Eagles on July first, twenty twenty, through August the thirty-first, twenty twenty. So you said at the cost of sixty-five thousand dollars.
I've answered that question. It's not additional money.
Okay, it's not additional money?
No, no, ma'am.
Okay, I'm just saying, because the way it's written here, it appears that it's additional funding, and that's why I'm asking a question for clarification.
I think, you may think it's additional because it's referencing abatement, but that's referring to the entire contract.
The prior contract that he had.
No.
But wasn't this sixty-five thousand dollars a part of that prior contract?
It was not. No, ma'am.
So the abatement was not part of the previous contract that was, that he had?
This money is referring to July and August of this fiscal year.
Okay.
Entire contract, not, not additional amount, not something for a payment, which is separate from illegal dumping. It's one reference. It's not additional.
Okay, well then, the reason why I'm, I'm just trying to get clarification, but the cost of the way it's written, it appear that it is, and I'm just asking. Thank you.
Mayor, can we go to the, the street superintendent?
Please, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. So Screamin' Eagle does actually, does not actually dump in our city yard. They have dump tickets that I will share for all of their work that they do.
You maybe just shed some light, there was an allegation that the contractor is dumping at the yard. So is there any reason why the contractor was there? Or could you just shed some light? Because I, as a business, we, we elected officials receive people lying on this all the time. But for a personal business owner, I think it's just very detrimental financially and impactful when these allegations or false statements are made. So I'd like to take the time to clarify that, if you could.
Okay, so Screamin' Eagle does access our yard from time to time. However, they're not using that to dump. We have water at our yard, and sometimes they use that to wash their vehicles, kind of rinse their vehicles off unless they do like homeless encampment cleanups, things that are really, really, really dirty. So that's why they may be in our, our dump, which is in the back of the yard. That's like the safest place for them to perform that activity. It keeps our personnel safe. And it actually, it's just a better place for the water to drain. So that would be the reason for them being in the back of our yard. Any dumping, I'm not aware of, that's going on in the back or on public property. I'm not aware of that at all. I have pictures of them dumping their truck, their trash in the city dump yard. I have pictures of it. So, I mean, that's just not true. I just wouldn't be aware of them, sir.
And we were talking about pictures. We don't know if they exist, where they are, who took them. I mean, I don't know about that. So if you have some, some pictures, Councilwoman Galvane, you should send those to the city manager so that he can investigate your claim. Because otherwise, we're just having a discussion that's really unfounded. When I have questions or if there are reports from residents or different issues within the city, I definitely report them immediately to city management and to the city attorney, depending on the legality of what the claim is, but I'm at a council meeting.
I mean, Mayor, you always say that I save all my stuff to come to the council meeting. The problem is that I do make these requests, and they don't get answered, just like I made requests to get copies of the receipts of the dumpings, and I've been asking for that for months. I made, I asked for a copy of the RFP that was allegedly done when this company was awarded eighty thousand dollars to start picking up trash when we're on break, and I don't get them. So because, you know, for, just for transparency, I asked these on the floor. I wish I didn't have to. I wish I could get, I wish I came today with the copy of the receipts. So when these people made public comments saying they dumped in the yard and they put down the council members, they threaten us, they, they, you know, say all this crazy stuff, which is, I think, more embarrassing to a business owner than me asking about if they have dump receipts. I wish I didn't have to do that. I wish today I came to the meeting and the dump receipts were in my email that, you know, totaled the amount of money they were awarded. This is a six-figure contract, and I'm just asking for the dump receipts. That's it. For eighty thousand dollars, they turned in under fifteen hundred dollars of dump receipts. Those are facts. Those, that information was provided by the city manager via email. There has been zero receipts emailed to me for the contract that they've had and were awarded since then. Hundreds of thousands of dollars, and I think that people deserve to know.
Councilman, we are, as the street superintendent indicated, we are providing the dump receipts. You won't find the dump receipts to equal the amount of the contract.
Oh, absolutely not.
Right. I thought that's, that's something you just stated.
No, I, obviously, I know if you collect the obviously, I know that it makes no sense for a business owner to get a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar contract and turn in four hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of dump receipts. But it should be comparable to the trash that they pick up. So example, if they're making twenty thousand dollars a month, they should not have two hundred dollars worth of dump receipts. That just makes no sense at all.
Right.
Obviously, I'm not expecting to turn in four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of dump receipts. I know that's just not possible, but I also know that it's, it's outrageous for them to have eighty thousand dollars of picking up trash and turn in under fifteen hundred dollars of dump receipts, especially without how, how expensive it is to dump trash.
I would be most concerned about the, the weight of what is actually being disposed upon and the volume of trash, and maybe even can measure it or comparable to other cities, not necessarily someone's particular contract and the number of receipts. Because what is your expectation or what is the reasonable profit margin for this individual business that we're talking about here? What is acceptable to you, Councilwoman Galvane? What do you anticipate to see with a contract at this level? What is your level?
You know, you know, a dump receipt has the weight and the date where they dumped the trash. So, I mean, that would explain a lot. Simple dump receipts can explain a lot. And right now, we're just trusting the word of the city manager and the, the was it street superintendent or the gentleman that just spoke that works at the yard that says they have never dumped trash in the yard, but yet I just sent Craig a picture of them unloading their truck and dumping trash in the yard. So, I mean, that statement is just false. Dump receipts can prove a lot.
I'm sorry, Councilman, I apologize.
Sorry, that, that was, I was just answering the mayor's question. I'm done.
No, I was just going to say that I do remember that when this came up before that the contractor did explain the difference in the receipts and that it depends on, you know, one day it may weigh this much, it depends on the day which you're picking up, et cetera, for it to become comparable. But he did address that discrepancy before, and I believe he said that he only he gave it to just to show the balance of the weight. It wasn't every receipt that he had, but he just wanted to show that, you know, here's an example of it is never going to be the same. It depends on when I clean under the bridge off of Alameda. It may be, you know, six hundred thousand dollars to dump off versus, you know, one little street or an alley. So I do remember him giving that detailed description on the discrepancy or the difference in the price, excuse me, of the receipts.
I don't, I don't remember that at all. And, and he turned in five receipts, not, not two. And when I asked him, where's the other receipts? That was all that was turned in. That's all he had. So I remember that very vividly, actually.
It was all that he had with him, but it's not all he had, but he was just showing, thinking that he was just showing.
And he has not turned in, he has not turned in a single receipt since. Half a million dollars later, still not a single receipt that I have seen. Maybe you've seen them, but I have not seen them. And that's all I'm asking for is just top of the receipts.
Contract, that's what the city manager is here for. We, on the council, we do not oversee contracts. So at the point when they come before us for consideration, discussion, deliberation, that is our fiduciary responsibility to review the information that's presented. But it's not our responsibility on the day to day to go measure and meet him at the dump and weigh what exactly he's dropping off. I would just say, as the representatives of our, obviously, the residents of Compton, that we have a pretty good I would just say as the representatives of our, obviously the residents of Compton, that we have a pretty good indicator as to the volume of trash that's being addressed by this contractor and by city staff, because we are the direct line of contact in most cases when residents require a, a level of service. So that, that's to each council person, they have their own experience relating to this particular matter. But I do think we should ensure that we stay focused on the facts and also manage our expectations for level of reasonability when we are talking about individual business or their performance or their applicability to them actually adhering to what the contract is actually stating. Because if the city has not explicitly stated that the vendor should be submitting their, or their dump receipts on a specific interval or increment, then we're again, well, I should say again, but then this request would be outside of what that contract is actually demanding. So we need to be careful as to what we're talking about here.
I, I never once said that we should go to the dump site every day and ask them to turn receipts. And I do agree with your statement that it is not our job to oversee this contract. It is the city manager's job to oversee it. And all I did was ask for copies of the receipt, which I don't think is an outrageous request. And I still have not got a straight answer of why we don't collect receipts from them. And you keep saying, is this receipt, turning the receipts even a part of the contract? I don't know, city manager hasn't answered that question. So I, I thought it was a part of it, he said it was going to be a part of it.
Councilman, I provide the receipts at the, in the, in the past, as a result of your requests. The receipts aren't part of the requirement for a check from the vendor. But I, I did provide it prior because of your request. And I'll provide you the, the other receipts as well, but it's not part of the contract.
Yeah, you provided the receipts when they were already awarded eighty thousand dollars, the day before they, I mean, the day of getting approved for a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar contract.
You're referring to eighty thousand dollars, like they didn't work for it.
I mean, all you have to do is show up at one cleanup and you would know the level and the amount of work that's required to actually clear these.
Actually, I actually been to several, I actually been to several cleanups, especially during the pandemic. I was at Alameda the last two times that it was cleaned up. So I'm not saying they don't work for it. I'm just saying the residents deserve to see the receipts, that's all. Eighty thousand dollars for collecting twelve hundred dollars of trash doesn't seem like it's a good bargain for the city.
I felt about that three hundred thousand dollar graffiti.
Any additional discussion?
I agree with you, Councilman.
I agree too.
Excuse me?
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure, like I said, I spoke with the city manager in regards to some concerns that the community had over there about that site on Alameda. And my concern is whether or not that has been addressed and everything, because in addressing that, because they have been complaining. And like I said, I've sent him information and I've also talked to him several times in regarding it about that. So hopefully they have been able to address that, Mr. City Manager, where you guys in regards to that.
Yes, we've, we've talked about it, councilperson Sharif. They are at times changing from one truck to another. That's not a, a site where they dump trash. They may be consolidating trash before they go to the transfer station. And if council would remember, we were unable to stop encampments from going on to that site prior to the contractor placing vehicles on it. So we stopped that problem. Now that site is up for, is available for sale. So I've informed the contractor, they'll need to look for relocation on their own. But it certainly stopped a dire need in the, in the community with the graffiti, the trash and the folks that kept breaching our fence and living on that property prior to them taking.
Okay, thank you.
Greg, I just have one last question. So just for clarity, are you saying them paying the dump fee is not a part of their contract?
That's not what I'm saying.
So what did you say? Can you clarify what you said? Because it kind of sounded like the same thing, like they don't have to show you the receipts. So how are you going to know what they're paying? How do you, how are you going to know how much trash they're picking up if they don't give you dump receipts showing how many pounds of trash they pick up each day, each week, each month? What kind of, what kind of safety or measurements do you have in place?
The contract isn't based on weight of trash.
What's it based off?
It's based on the satisfaction of, of cleaning up the area. So we get pictures. We just want the, the area clean and we get proved the areas clean. And for that, it's a flat fee. And we give direction of the various alleys and main streets is for the contractor to go. And my comment was that not that they're not responsible for the transfer fees. My comment was as part of the check assured process. They're, they're not submitting the, the dump fees.
So have you collected receipts from them from the dump yard? Or is that the street superintendent that's on the, on the Zoom as well? He's the one that collected them?
Yes, and he has provided them. He's provided the fees to you, the ones you're referring to in the past.
No, you gave them to me, not him. You sent me the email with the fees from dump.
I don't get them directly.
No, I just want to make it clear that I don't ask any city employee for anything. If I have a request, I go through the city manager.
No, that's not what I'm trying to say. But we will provide the fees.
Okay, and also I think that, it was just said right now in the open that they never dump trash at the yard. I'm going to provide you pictures of them doing so, and then maybe we have to really look into that and see, you know, what happened? Is it a one-time thing? Is it a daily thing? What happens? But I think that the receipts from the dump yard will determine a lot and show a lot exactly how much trash they pick up in the city. And if it's worse, the amount of money that we're paying each month. So I'm requesting again in public forum, like I requested to you privately and individually. Can you please send me the receipts for the lifetime of their contract that they've had last year? The dump receipts each month, please? Thank you.
Any additional discussion?
I was just, oh, go ahead, please. Mayor, I was just gonna ask, I'm sorry, I was just gonna ask that, you know, when you share the, the receipts, could you just share it with the council? So they will all have the opportunity to share their information as well as, I, I understand that what Councilwoman Sharif was saying, they were getting complaints about people, about his equipment being over there. But, you know, I, I understand that what you just said and the street superintendent, I know that he gets it. So when he submits his invoice, it's, it's accompanied by the actual photos and the before and after. Is that what it's based on?
I'll let the street superintendent answer.
That, that is correct, Councilman McCoy. Once Screaming Eagle submits his invoice, he submits that with the dump, with pictures, photos of that site before and after, as well as the, the dump receipts.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, may I just make something clear to the council? Is that the complaints that I was receiving was about the fact that they were dumping on that lot. It wasn't about the trucks being parked, it was about them dumping on the lot. And that's the reason why I did have the conversation with the city manager regarding that for him, so he could address it. And so he just clarified and said that he had addressed it with him. So that's what, that's what my concern were, because those are the calls that I was receiving from the community. Thank you.
Understood, thank you, Councilwoman Sharif. Any additional discussion? Roll call?
Councilperson Chambers?
Yes.
Galvane?
No.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif? Sharif?
Yes, so long as the sixty five thousand dollars is not included in there, okay.
Mayor Brown?
Yes, thank you.
Item number nine is a resolution of the city council of the city of Compton, acting in its capacity as the Compton Housing Successor Agency, authorizing the city manager to make a budget transfer between bond funds and taxes accounts and issue a purchase order to the Los Angeles County Audit Controller in the amount of eighty seven thousand nine hundred and sixty nine dollars plus statutory late payment charges for the payment of property taxes for the housing successor agency-owned property located at one nine five zero North Central Avenue and in connection with the development of thirty's single-family homes.
So move. Second.
Discussion? I've just asked for a quick explanation for the benefits of the residents regarding.
Yes, Mayor and council, as we know, nineteen fifty North Central Avenue is part of a purchase and sale contract with the Olson Group. An item has come up in escrow regarding a lien that was placed on title prior to CRA ownership. And it's, it's our responsibility to take care of this matter and have the project proceed forward as expeditiously as possible. The sum of money is eighty nine thousand dollars. And we are requesting authority to make that payment.
Thank you, city manager, for the explanation. I know we're all excited to see this project still moving forward and to remove this blight and return it to the tax rolls and generate revenue and housing. We know it's been in the pipeline for some time and it's good to see it pushing forward. So thank you for this.
I'm sorry, I should have said seven thousand nine hundred and sixty nine dollars is the exact.
You said seven thousand or eighty seven?
Eighty seven thousand nine hundred.
I have a question, Madam Mayor. Do we have any other liens, city manager, on any properties? Because that is, that could hinder future projects coming and maybe cause us to lose contractual agreements if we have outstanding liens on properties.
That would have to come up per property.
Per property?
Yeah, we have to do searches per property. Often, especially the properties that are with successor agency.
Right.
There may be histories prior to CRA ownerships.
Lien process.
Yeah, you, you may find this from time to time. But like with this matter, we have housing, housing funds that are able to clear it quickly and keep the project moving. So I'll, I'll keep it in mind as we go through these sales to make sure we don't have this type of hiccup.
Please, I work, I work down there. My district, I got a process, my own lien. But I also want to say thank you again for moving this project forward. It's going to be a great asset to District One and the residents of St. Paul are of course excited. However, we have a gentleman who's living back there and that currently, who spoke with Mr. Antoni, started a fire. So my concern is again, we need to involve mental health, our mental health partners when we are removing anyone who has obviously, obvious mental issues who are starting fires, like I said before, that harmful to themselves, for the safety of the residents themselves and of course our city employees. Because now he's back again, he was there, gone maybe an hour, and now he's back again. The residents are really worried about this evening. So we can keep an eye out on that and also please dispatch some mental health services to him tomorrow. I'd greatly appreciate it or this evening or I'll keep an eye on it because I live two streets over. But I, I'll watch it, but if we can get somebody over there tomorrow, I'd really appreciate it. And then again, thank you very much for keeping this project moving.
Yes.
Thank you.
Roll call?
Councilperson Chambers?
Yes.
Galvane?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Item number ten is a resolution of the city council of the city of Compton, authorizing the adoption of the city of Compton's plan to combat and prevent homelessness. And I believe we have a PowerPoint presentation on the side.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor and council, we have, I believe, Kimberly McKenzie, that will be presenting the PowerPoint for council.
Thank you very much.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Welcome, Ms. McKenzie.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. How's everyone this evening?
Doing well, thank you.
Good, so my name is Kimberly McKenzie and I am the city of Compton homeless coordinator. And it has, I just want to start off by saying it has been an interesting and informative last six months working with this project. So the dates you see here on this first slide coincide with the LA County Homelessness Initiative. And so we are hoping for adoption or approval of the plan today. And the plan goes through September thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Next slide, please. So the presentation overview will include key elements of the plan. We'll discuss this, Compton's homeless plan. We have five goals, one through five, strategic partnerships and roles, and next steps. Next slide, please. So why develop a plan? We have seen with our own eyes in the city of Compton, LA County, and throughout the nation, an increase in our unsheltered population. Men, women, and children are experiencing homelessness and desperately need assistance and vital services. Another reason to have a plan is it's our roadmap. It gives us access to funding. So take a look at our numbers with the homeless, the Compton homeless count in twenty nineteen, LA County counted four hundred and twenty-four people. In twenty twenty, we had six hundred, and that should be six hundred and fifty-three individuals that were counted with the LA County homeless count. Next slide, please. So the key elements of the plan, we have the development of the homeless plan, goals and related actions, participation and collaborative efforts in SPA six, which is Service Planning Area six. And our plan, I want to say that our plan was developed utilizing LA County's template that was released for the first round of funding through Measure H funding. And so our plan, we use the same template. Next slide, please. Development of the plan. So in March twenty nineteen, staff held the initial homeless task force meeting to begin the development of the plan. Since then, staff, we held fifteen task force meetings, twelve meetings in twenty nineteen and three meetings in twenty twenty. And our last meeting was just August thirty first of twenty twenty. We collaborated with community-based groups, law enforcement agencies, homeless service providers, city staff, community stakeholders, and faith-based organizations. Next slide, please. So our goals, when you read the plan, you'll see that the goals have supporting actions, they have associated policy changes, goal measurements, goal ownership, leverage city resources and timelines. So let's talk about the first goal. Goal one, increase education awareness and current services. So the supportive action to this goal is prepare and distribute a resource guide. The resource guides will have services and facilities. And it will be distributed amongst our business community and our house residents, or it will be distributed throughout the community. The second supporting action is conduct workshops that address topics such as tenant rights and issues that our teens and our youth face with regards to homelessness. My third supporting action is collaborate with community-based organizations. One organization that we had as part of our task force is United Ways Everyone In. United, Everyone In partnered with L.A. County to forge a community involvement, a community movement, I'm sorry, to build public and political will to end homelessness and housing crisis. Next slide, please. Goal two, create more interim and permanent supportive housing opportunities. So the first supporting action is create a rapid rehousing program. This is real critical because the critical steps in preventing chronic homelessness is shortening the time someone is unhoused. So that's real key, because we know that supportive housing residents, the health improves, the financial condition improves, and it becomes more self-sufficient. So item two, we want to enhance the accessory dwelling units program, the ADU program. We want to implement policies and procedures to increase the number of permitted ADUs. And number three, seek passage of homeless shelter overlay zone and other measures to encourage development of interim and permanent supportive housing. Next slide, please. Continue with goal number two. Number four is to continue to explore funding options to build more affordable and supportive housing and seek partnerships and build relationships with nonprofit affordable housing developers. Number five is identify existing city-owned controlled land that can be developed for interim and supportive housing. Next slide, please. Goal number three is to coordinate with regional partners on the plan implementation. So participate, and we want to participate in regional coordination activities with the Gateway City Council of Governments, the Gateway Cog and neighboring cities. Want to share information on best practices and resources. You want to engage in partnerships with neighboring cities as well. And apply for funding within city and regional partnerships to implement homelessness plan goals. Next slide, please. Goal four is to coordinate with partners to prevent the spread of COVID-nineteen. And of course, we had to have a goal that deals with the situation that we're now in, the pandemic of COVID-nineteen. So we want to engage in partnerships with neighboring cities to provide interim housing and services for those at high risk of hospitalization and death due to COVID-nineteen. Want to apply for funding within the city and regional partnerships to implement programs that prevent the spread of COVID-nineteen within the homeless population and provide shelter and services to higher-risk individuals within a homeless, within the homeless population. Next slide, please. The goal five, we want to identify alternative sheltering options. Want to participate in regional coordinated activities with Gateway Council, Gateway City's Council of Government and neighboring cities utilizing hotels and motel vouchers or other resources to move high-risk individuals to alternative locations that allow for more social distancing than is available in the shelter. We want to identify respite care locations for patients with confirmed COVID-I-D, COVID-nineteen, sorry, who have been discharged from the hospital in coordination with local healthcare facilities, local health departments, and project room key locations for those who tested positive but are asymptomatic. So let's talk about, next slide, please. Let's talk about strategic partnerships and the roles of these partners as we move forward with implementing the plan. So L.A. County is a partner, and we want to access the funding that L.A. County has. LASSA, which stands for Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority. Make referrals. We currently make referrals to LASSA so that homeless individuals are in their coordinated entry system, so they have access to services and resources. And HOPIC, which stands for Homeless Outreach. Let me back up. So that last one, SPA, that should be SPA six with the LASSA. So this little minor correction. HOPIC. HOPIC stands for Homeless Outreach Programs Integrated Care Systems, HOPIC. Referrals are made to HOPIC, so the individuals are enrolled in the coordinated entry system in SPA six so that they can have access to resources and services as well. And we have our faith-based organizations that will provide volunteers for outreach programs, will help in disseminating information and resources about what's going on in the City of Compton. Next slide, please. Want to utilize neighborhood block clubs to provide information to the city on new and ongoing homeless issues or hotspots that need to be addressed. And they too will also assist in providing and getting out, disseminating information. Our law enforcement agency will be very instrumental in assisting staff and service providers as we go out to homeless encampments and provide resources. And then you have our, we have our city staff. City staff will coordinate with service providers for referral services, inform and educate the community on new and ongoing homeless issues. And our city staff includes homeless coordinator, public works department, fire department, code enforcement, council liaisons. Next slide, please. So our next steps and implementation plan. So once we have our plan approved, city staff will submit the approved plan to L.A. County, to Los Angeles County for consideration for grant funding. City staff will develop informational materials regarding emergency overlay zone for homeless facilities. And city staff will collaborate with strategic partners and city departments to develop comprehensive wraparound and supportive services to our homeless population. Next slide, please. So I just want to say that lots of work and meetings were conducted to develop this plan for your approval. And within the last year, we have successfully enhanced our interactions and collaborations with our service providers. We have built a cohesive coordinated approach to providing services and resources to our unsheltered residents. And I personally want to thank the city staff, especially Michael Antoine, Leslie Tafoya, and Coley Fields for their efforts, their commitment to seeing that this plan is completed and before you. And I want to thank Mr. City Manager Cornwell for the opportunity to be involved with this project. So that concludes my report. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Ms. McKenzie, for the detailed outline of what the strategy is and moving forward, how we'll be able to better affect this population and also communicate with our residents. Are there any questions from the City Council?
Yes, that was a great presentation. I don't have a question. I just want to say thank you to the city management team, to the staff, Ms. McKenzie, Coley, and everyone who was involved in this plan. And finally, we have a course of action. We're on the right road. We have, now that we have a plan, we can start putting things in motion and start receiving some funding allocations that we have been long overdue. So again, I just want to say thank you to the city staff who took this time and the patience with our unsheltered residents and providing them resources, connecting with partners, building relationships. Thank you to Ms. Coley Fields. Ms. Coley and her mother, you know, feeds homeless, unsheltered city residents daily. So I want to say thank you to Ms. Fields for her love and compassion towards our unsheltered residents. And again, thank you very much. Job well done, Ms. McKenzie.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, you know, I've been waiting for this, so I thank you. But in looking at this, I just had a question for Ms. McKenzie. Is that how many project room key facilities do we have here in the city at this time?
Yes, thanks for asking, and I should have included that in my presentation. We have one approved project room key facility, and that is the Tropicana on Compton Boulevard at Compton and Bradville.
Okay, are we looking at other hotels and motels? Because I know you mentioned hotels and motels in this plan. And I'm just wondering, are you looking at trying to more hotels and motels and to be a part of that project room key? Or exactly how do you plan to address that? Because I'm looking at, I'm just looking at where we could actually be able to bring some type of facility, open up something that could really help the unsheltered people. And I'm just looking at that, so I'm just wondering if you are looking at other motels that you guys are going to maybe addressing or talking to in regards to this program?
Yes, so the project room key facilities are approved by Los Angeles County. And what we have done as a team, city staff, is that we have pulled a list of hotels and motels that are located in the City of Compton, and so we're taking a look at that list, and that's our first step. But yes, the project room keys are approved by Los Angeles County.
If I can, Mayor Brown, to Councilperson Sharif's comment, to add to Ms. McKenzie's statements, that is correct. In addition, Los Angeles County just recently notified the city that they're in the process of evaluating the acquisition of two additional motels in the city. One is located on Long Beach Boulevard. The second motel is located on Artesia. So we're in the process now of responding to L.A. County and providing them with the city's confirmation of compliance. They're required through a public acquisition process to go to any local jurisdiction for land use compliance. So we're in the process of evaluating that request from L.A. County, but based on the information that they submit to the city, they're spending approximately twelve million or so of their H-money for the acquisition of these two motels in the city.
The one is on Long Beach Boulevard and the other one is on Artesia. The one on Artesia, where would that one be located if it's in Compton?
Honestly, I'm not sure, Ms. Sharif. I don't have the address in front of me. I can try to pull it up and find it. I do know the one on Long Beach Boulevard, I'm more familiar with that site. It's diagonal from, it's at Long Beach and Temple, but diagonal from the Succession Agency on property at eleven-seventeen South Long Beach Boulevard. So that one is directly across from that city on property. The one on Artesia, I'll have to honestly get back with you with the exact address and or cross street for.
Thank you. And when you said Long Beach Boulevard, I was kind of, because I know that one on Long Beach Boulevard, we've been looking at that for, to just see if what we can do some other things with. So I was hoping that maybe that was one of the ones they may be looking at, and everything, because that one is, I know they just got a new owner, not too long ago, so I didn't know exactly where they were in regards to trying to address that with them. But so, okay, so there's two more coming into the city, so hopefully that will give us an opportunity to get more of the people off the street. So I'm just looking at, if they are doing this, are they really focusing on the homeless people here in the city? Are they opening up to everybody? That's what my concern is, is that because again, being in the, being here in the city, can we even suggest that? Is that what they're doing, or how does that really work?
That's definitely a concern of city management as well, you know, through Mr. Cornwell, we did express that desire with the Tropicana site. In our conversations with L.A. County and through their service provider, HOPIC, who actually is the operator or administrator of the Tropicana site, there is a preference for a city of persons who are unhoused in the City of Compton, but they also do house persons who are not, you know, here in the city as well. They, I forget the exact term, but they use like a geographical boundary, you know, or they call it adjacent or with familial ties to the area. So maybe an unhoused person grew up in Compton, or they have family members near in the area. That's part of the county's justification, but I know, because we tried to, you know, ask that as be a prerequisite, but the county's position is that they will, you know, use Compton residents or, you know, unhoused persons in Compton as a first priority, but they won't reject any other unhoused person if they wanted to, you know, be in that facility.
Okay, okay, thank you, thank you. Oh, one other question. I noticed that in this particular plan here, that you didn't have the overlay zone included in this. I know the one before is that is the overlay zone going to be coming back later? Or is there some other adjustments being made in that overlay zone? Exactly how are we moving with that?
The overlay, excuse me, the overlay zone, as previously approved by the council, is in the process of, we're preparing some, we'll call them marketing materials, so that, you know, we're able to easily communicate that area to the development community and to our service providers. If council wants to make any changes, I know there was discussion prior to the adoption of adding another area to the overlay zone. So at this time, staff isn't proceeding forward with that unless council would like to direct us to add an additional area. But right now, we're focusing on the current area that was approved by council, but with council direction, we can, you know, add any additional areas and modify the overlay zone accordingly.
Okay, thank you, because I was hoping that when you guys brought it back, that you would have more than one option there in regards to the overlay zone, that if you guys would take a look to see if there was some other areas that could you possibly, that would be able to utilize. And so that's what I was hoping for, that when you brought it back, that there would be more than one option there. But I do know that we did approve one option on it, and they just said that we can make some changes if need be, so thank you.
Well, we did review several options that came before us in the public hearing. So this was the iteration that councils supported, which is back before us. So we've gone through several iterations of zones, just for the benefit of the residents. This is not the only zone that was presented to us.
No, that's what I was saying, Mayor Brown. I understand that because I would just, they were just asking, he did ask at the time when we did it, because when we made that, we approved it, he did tell us that we can make some changes if need be. That's what, that's what I'm referring to. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And then, Mr. Antoine, thank you for the presentation. And if there's a way for Project Room Key to come, I know that they've done a presentation about the program, and it was really in the preliminary stages, but if they could, or even provide some more information about how they're making their selections, because obviously we have a population of unhoused individuals in Compton, and I'm not certain about their outreach process, but if they're saying that they will select those people that may not necessarily live in Compton, that obviously is concerning to all of us for many reasons. But I want to ensure that at least Compton residents get the first right of refusal for these new units that will be made available within the community.
Definitely, Mayor Brown. Ms. McKenzie and I will contact Project Room Key administrators and then work through the city manager's office to hopefully have them come and make a presentation of their, provide some, a bit to the council and to the community regarding the program.
Okay, thank you.
And then also, Mayor Brown, if I can, I did just get the information for the second hotel motel, excuse me. It's Willow Inn off of Artesia and Central Avenue for the council and community.
Willow Tree?
Yes.
Willow Tree in the third district. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. City Manager, thank you, Mr. Antoine.
Thank you, Mayor Council.
Anything else to add before we conclude? Thank you all again for the preparation of this plan to enable us to move forward and be able to access some additional resources for our population. Roll call.
Madam Mayor, we need a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I thought we did.
So move. Second.
Discussion or additional discussion? Roll call.
Councilperson Chambers?
Yes.
Galvain? Galvain? McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Your council comments?
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry, Madam.
Oh, no, I was just thinking, Council, excuse me, Madam City Clerk, please proceed forward.
Okay, thank you. Just another reminder that we have COVID testing at Gonzalez Park Sunday through Thursday, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Please call 1-888-634-1123 to schedule an appointment to advantage of this great opportunity and resource that we have here in the city. Again, that is COVID testing at Gonzalez Park Sunday to Thursday, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Please call 1-888-634-1123. I'll be hosting another food box giveaway. I want to say thank you to Omega Sci-Fi, Compton, and Senator, retired Senator Isidore Hall and all the other partners. I'm sorry, I'm going to see. Uplift L.A. Institute for hosting along with me and Mayor Brown the food giveaway this weekend. And we gave over 1,000 boxes of food away. It was amazing. It was wonderful. Again, as usual, I delivered food to the seniors, the three senior high-rise housing developments in my district, and it was, it was beautiful. Just thank you so much to all the partners who came out and gave food to our community. We will be hosting that same giveaway this weekend. Again, that is from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at Gonzalez Park. And then, again, it's over 1,000 meals. And in the box, by the way, are eggs, milk, yogurt, onions, potatoes, cheese, and meat. So it's a really good box. It's from the United States Department of Agriculture. So please share this information with family and friends that the food giveaway is open to the public, is going to be for anyone, whether you're a district owner or not. And it is at, on the 17th, this Saturday, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. The following weekend, and I want to thank Kansas City, Compton Advocates for bringing this great partner. We're going to partner with Omega Sci-Fi again, as well as the L.A. Dodgers. So come on out. We're going to have our great city management team and our city treasurer permitting. I know our city clerk can't participate because our voting center is open up, but you'll see Compton's leadership team out there giving. They're all in their best, and my colleagues, so thank you all who are coming out to volunteer to make this possible. It'll be a huge food giveaway. Saturday, October 24th, it will be the last one along the partnership with Omega Sci-Fi and L.A. Dodgers. Okay, let me move this one along. Youth Build is an official voting center. Please don't forget, Youth Build is an official voting center. The old dot, the old dollar sign, it is 1108 North Oleander Avenue. Again, 1108 North Oleander, starting October the 30th to November the 2nd. The hours are 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And then, November the 3rd, on Election Day, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. So again, thank you to Sarah Silverman, Ms. Kim Hughes, for always being a community partner and pushing and striving for the best and bringing resources to our city. Again, Compton Youth Build is an official voting center. Assistant City Manager, can we please look at code enforcement coming over to Seabreeze Park, please? There's been a homeless encampment set up there with the campers, a lot of people in cars. If we can dispatch the homeless resources to them, I greatly appreciate it. But yeah, that's been every night there. And also, we have a complaint with, well, I can handle that one. Yes, and also, before I go, I would like to say congratulations to Mr. Malakai Wooten. Mr. Malakai Wooten is a resident of District 1. He is 10 years old, and he just won the 2020 United States Tennis League Association SA Grant, National SA Con. So he is, congratulations, Malakai. He is the son of Ms. Tigress and Mr. Kenneth Wooten Jr. Again, these are great residents of District 1. I love to see our young people excelling in excellence. And he would like to, he wants to be a tennis player and an engineer. So joining me, congratulating our own, Compton's own. And then, when I see in the book, the national, and by the way, he's one of seven children who won this grant over the country, all over the country, so worldwide. So he is, I throw my heart to see when I opened the book and I see his little smiling face, it didn't say from South L.A., it said from Compton, the hub city. So congratulations again to Mr. Malakai Wooten and the Wooten family. I attended the funeral this weekend of Mr. Tyree Hall. Mr. Tyree Hall is a long time, was a long time Compton Unified employee. And his brother, Mr. Joe Hall, was a Public Works employee, you know, so residents of this family in District 1 as well. I attended that funeral on behalf of the city. I think it's important that when our public servants go gain their wings and we show respect and be with the family during that time. So it was an honor to be there with the Hall family at Eaglewood Cemetery. And also, I let everyone have their words. You were my friend, made me laugh. I'm going to miss you. Fly high, Mr. Herbert. That's all my public comments. Prayers for the Arsenal family. I will let Councilwoman McCoy and Mayor Brown, of course, give deeper comments. I already spoke with her, but carry on again, as usual. My name is Michelle Chambers, and it is my pleasure to serve you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Chambers. Councilman Galvain?
Can I hear you, Mayor?
Thank you, Councilwoman McCoy.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few things. Mr. City Manager, I have a request for tree trimming on 163rd Street. I understand that in the 1500 block, there is, the tree is blocking the roadway, and the street sweeper can't actually sweep in front of the area. So I'm requesting tree trimming on 163rd and also on 154th, the same thing. And I'll get the block, the one, whatever block that he is, I'll get that one back to you. And I have a request for speed bumps on Raymond between Wilmington and Greenleaf. That is the only, there is nothing preventing cars from speeding down the street because there are no speed bumps. I don't know how long the speed hump process is. So if you could just have staff let me know so that I could inform the resident. And I want, like, the status of the walking trail. I received a complaint about the walking trail. There was an event in the park several weeks ago with the horses, and they kind of affected the walking trail. And I know that staff was going out, going out, but I just need an update on that. And also, I got a concern, and I turned this in once, and I just need an update on the fence around Elderman Park. The residents that live near there are saying that, you know, because there, the fence has been breached, the horses go over there, and they have torn up the grass and the area. So I'm requesting that Elderman Park be maintained as well as we replace the broken areas on the fence. And I would like to congratulate Gloria Gray. She was actually re-elected to her second term for MWD. She was re-elected today as the chairwoman for her second term. So congratulations to Gloria Gray. Yes, and let's see. Try to hurry up, Mayor. There will be a pop-up census event in the third district on October 21st. More information will be forthcoming on the location and time. And then, also, the virtual town hall meeting that I have scheduled, that has been changed to October 29th, and more information is coming on that. And then, I'll be hosting a trunk-or-treat on October 31st in conjunction with the Latino Chamber. And just a reminder, again, we still, the deadline for the census was changed. We have until October 31st. Please, Compton, let's make Compton count. Get out and take your census. And the deadline to register to vote is fast approaching. On the 19th, I think, is the last day for you to register to vote. Come on, Compton, come on, everyone. We have to vote in this election. And please continue to wear your mask. This pandemic is not over. Wear your mask, wash your hands, use hand sanitizer, and whenever possible, avoid gatherings. And this is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. The Commission for Women would usually have a big display in the lobby, but due to the pandemic, they couldn't do it. So I want you to know, Commission for Women, you are not forgotten. Your hard work is not going unnoticed, and we are still doing a virtual breast cancer awareness. So please get tested. It saves lives. Early detection saves lives. And I think that is it, other than I want to adjourn in memory of Thelma Delores Terrell. She's a long, long time resident of the city in the third district. Yvonne McFarland, who was a long time, long time ago, an employee of the city. And of course, my heart goes out to Councilwoman Yvonne Arseneau. We lost her husband, Herbert Arseneau. Councilwoman Arseneau, you have our deepest sympathy. We are with you in spirit and love, and rest well, Mr. Arseneau. And that is all of my comments today, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman McCoy. Councilwoman Sharif?
Thank you, Mayor Brown. I have an upcoming event, the Grab and Go Food Giveaway, will be Friday, October 16th, from 12:00 to 1:00. I will host a food giveaway in the collaboration with the Los Angeles City Councilmember, Herb Weston, will be there. Mount Pilgrim Baptist Church, Drew Childcare Development Corporation, and Compton Chamber of Commerce. The Drive Food Giveaway will be located at Mount Pilgrim Church, 400 South Santa Fe Avenue. That's 400 South Santa Fe Avenue. Please come out. And this is the first one we have in for this month. We ran a little short behind. And on Wednesday, October 21st, I will be hosting a live town hall. Joining me will be Commissioner Priscilla Olson, who is an active member of the Los Angeles County Civilian Oversight Committee Commission. She will be sharing some information as well as answering some questions that the community has. It will be live on Facebook and on Channel 36. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact my office and submit your questions ahead of time, so we can make sure those questions are answered. And on Thursday, October 22nd, at 3:00 p.m., I will host a prayer vigil event. I have invited several pastors in the community to come and pray about the specific needs of our community. Please join us as we pray for the city of Compton. This event will be live on Facebook. And there's an employment opportunity. The community Bridget and Horan are now hiring for general clerical services and warehouse technical support. You can find out more information by going to info@bridgethoran.com, or you can contact them at 877-238-5019. And Mr. City Manager, you did send me an email in regard, in regard to some of the concerns that I had. But there was one thing that seemed to be really coming up. It seemed to be a concern of, for quite a few people over here on Point City, and that is the alley behind 422 South Point City. I know you and I spoke about that. And they're asking if we can give me a date, some type of, where we are in regards to that closing off that alley. I know that you do have a task force that's put together. So hopefully, they can get some information to me as soon as possible for the community over there, so they know when that alley may be, where we are, is forced closing that alley out.
Yes, I will provide that.
Okay, thank you. And that is all of my closing remarks, I'm sorry. But I really want to extend my condolences to Councilwoman Yvonne Arseneau and her family. Mr. Arseneau, he was really someone that I really admired and really respected a lot, because I know he would always be one of the persons that I could always go to, to know that he would tell me the truth. And so that is something that he's going to be truly missed in this community. And I stand my, like I said, my heart goes out to Mr. Arseneau and our family. And him not being here is really going to be, leave a void here in this, in this city. So again, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sharif. I will also be as brief as possible. Just want to give the latest updates related to COVID-19, as well as identify a couple of additional upcoming events relative to the census. And then, I'll just close in memory of those mentioned on tonight. For confirmed COVID-19 cases in Los Angeles County, there have been 282,982 confirmed. There have been 6,773 confirmed deaths related to COVID-19. In the city of Compton, there are 4,223 confirmed cases, and there have been 74 fatalities related to COVID-19. We are still just requesting that people take advantage of the COVID-19 testing facility within our community. As Councilwoman Chambers mentioned, it is open from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., Sunday through Thursday. They are now accepting walk-ups. I understand that we are also able to utilize this facility for additional staffing and team needs. And so we're happy that this is available within our community. And we're just asking that the residents, please take advantage, because it is a use-it-or-lose-it resource. And as we are heading into the flu season, and as experts anticipate, COVID-19 transmissions will increase. We want to make sure that this resource is still available within our community. Also, just a reminder, the count is still confirmed for our census. The deadline is October 31st. We are currently at 64.4%. And I actually, I want to just put asterisks by the deadline, because the date is going back and forth. And I actually read the early date that there was a stay by judge. So I'm not certain what the new deadline is, but let's continue to just fill out our applications as much as we can and hope that those will actually count. Though we're still at 64%, so we have some room to improve. Also, I just want to acknowledge that the former employee here with us, her sister passed away, Shanae. She actually worked within the city of Compton, and her last name is McGee. Her sister passed away on the 8th. And I look forward to getting some more information that we'll share. But she was actually passed away from cancer. And I understand that Ms. Thelma Tamel, also Yvonne McFarland, we will close in memory. And then, also, former councilperson, Yvonne Arseneau's husband, as was mentioned by former councilpersons as well. Mr. Arseneau will be missed, and just my prayers and thoughts go out to Councilwoman Arseneau. I know they were married for over 50 years, and I know that that's a void that cannot be filled. But I know she's strong in her faith and will continue on and have beautiful memories for them and their family. And now, we will, if we could have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Thank you.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Chambers? Galvain? McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes. Thank you all, and good night.
Good night.
Good night. Sorry.